Okay, if we could have a call to order by our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Denise Delmar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Harabedian.
Here.
Councilmember Rochelle Arizmende.
Okay.
Councilmember John Capocha.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Gosh.
Here.
Madam Mayor, have a mayor quorum and may conduct city business.
Thank you so much. We could all rise while Councilmember Capocha does our salute.
Okay, please place your right hand over your heart and say along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, I apologize if you could remain standing. I don't really have an invocation prepared today, but we're going to reorganize today. And I just want to say just how appreciative I am of and privileged I am to serve on this council. I mean, this is a great group of people here. And I'd just like to remind everybody, because this is how I feel about it, is how fortunate we all are to live in a town like Sierra Madre, where any of you can pick up the phone and talk to your elected officials and will actually listen. And we listen to people when they come to the podium, and we do take their opinions into consideration. We're all here to execute the business of the city for the benefit of the residents of the town. And I think there is no finer example of how that goes on other than here in Sierra Madre. And I do know a lot of council members, because I sit on the San Gabriel Council of Governments, and I hear some things that are really would make it unpleasant for me to sit on their city council. So anyway, Sierra Madre's a great place, and happy Easter to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very sweet, thank you. Next, I'm gonna go to our, oh, agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Do we have any changes?
No changes.
To approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are approved the agenda. Next, we have a report out. We did have a closed session. I did attend by phone, but all the other council members were at the closed session. And City Attorney, can you please report out?
So, council met in closed session. They discussed a matter pertaining to land use issues, and no decision was taken.
Thank you. Would you like to state your name for everybody?
Yes, my name is Alex Giragosian. I'm a deputy city attorney for the city of Sierra Madre.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Approval of the meeting minutes. Has everybody had the opportunity to read our wonderful minutes once again? Are there any changes? I dare anybody to find a mistake.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those were the minutes from our March 26 meeting. And next, we have our mayor and city council reports. Who would like to start, if they have something to discuss?
I have something real quick. You know, I'm on the board for the San Gabriel mosquito and vector control. And I just want to announce that we are considering the Finance Committee, which I'm a part of, is an increase in the assessment to our residents. A very minor increase. I think it's, we're recommending a dollar eighty-six per year increase that you see on your property taxes. And that'll get us just a little bit above the Consumer Price Index over the past couple of years. But we've got, like Sierra Madre, some infrastructure issues that have to be addressed that previous leadership there neglected. Some things with the building that need to be discussed. So we are recommending just a 50 percent increase to take it from 136 to 186, as far as the increase goes, to address some of the infrastructure issues and build up our reserves a little bit. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's going on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Capocha, has there been any report out with the vector control about an increase in mosquitoes? I feel like I've already seen it. Has there been?
It's, yeah, the mosquito season is starting to blossom now that the weather's warming up. And, you know, basically, we're just admitting that the spread of the eighties mosquitoes is gonna just continue. There's nothing that can be done. In the time that I've been on the board for just a couple of years, we went from just a couple of spots in the San Gabriel Valleys where eighties, now it's completely all over the San Gabriel Valley. So that's one of the things that we're looking to do, too, is to, I mean, there's potential for serious diseases as a result of these non-native mosquitoes. And we're, you know, really pushing our director to get in front of that and working with folks in Florida on what can we do to protect public health before a crisis occurs and mitigate it before it actually happens. But, yeah, there, mosquitoes are all over, so.
Not really reassuring knowing that I have, like, at least six mosquito bites right now, so thank you.
Well, yes, and the, our staff would recommend that when you're outside, this goes for everybody, is to wear repellent. As repugnant that repellent is, but there always is a risk of, you know, like West Nile virus is a common one in the area. And the eighties, at any time, somebody could bring in Zika somewhere, and it could spread very quickly, you know. So it's not a problem yet. So we're just trying to stay on top of it and keep out in front of it before it becomes a big problem.
Councilmember Capocha, always bringing us the good news. Thank you. I also did hear someone did tell me that there are bracelets that you can buy that repel.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good for kids.
I would go to the San Gabriel vector control website and look that up. It's probably not effective.
Oh.
Wow, okay.
Okay.
Not good for kids.
Once again, Councilmember Capocha with the good news. Okay. Do we have any other council members who would like to?
I have no report.
No report?
I'll just report that, I know I shared it during the last meeting, but our former city clerk, Nancy Scholemberger, after 32 years, and someone said it's actually 34 years of service, she was recognized as a woman of distinction from Assembly Member, Chris Holden, District 41. So it was great to see her recognized there. And also, I think with both Councilmember Capocha and Mayor Pro Tem Harabedian, we attended the Pasadena Unified School District's State of the School with the Board President Larry Torres, who's also a resident here in Sierra Madre. And the report out was done at our middle school in here in Sierra Madre. And it was great to be able to showcase our middle school there. But the good news is financially, it looks like PUSD is doing well. And in terms of academics, there's a lot of achievements, I think, that's been going throughout the school district.
Yeah, agreed. I thought that the State of the Schools is really excellent. Larry did a great job. And the finances really have improved drastically from where they were, I think, the last time he presented to us. The only other thing I was going to comment on is, in my capacity as the representative on the Clean Power Alliance, just wanted to report that you will be seeing slightly different rates coming throughout the year, based on Southern California Edison adjusting their rates. So our rates are usually tied to Edison's. And Edison will adjust their rates throughout the year for various things, whether it's the PCIA or whether it's some sort of reimbursement issue. And it's really just a percent of a percent in terms of how much is being adjusted. But to the extent you're seeing some small adjustments, which will still be cheaper than Edison, if you're in Clean Power Alliance, that is going to be happening throughout the year. Secondly, if you do have any continued questions about Clean Power Alliance or your bill, feel free to come to me. Feel free to, you know, reach out to the Clean Power Alliance staff as well. But happy to answer any questions.
Is that it?
That's it.
I do want to mention that we do have a Sierra Madre woman who's gonna be honored with Judy Choo this Saturday.
Yes.
Cindy Montoya, did I say that correctly? And we do have two of our representatives who will be attending that. Okay, thank you. I would have loved to have gone, but it's my granddaughter's birthday.
Priorities.
Priorities. All right, and next, we have public comment. So these are for items that are not on the agenda. If you don't know what's on the agenda, we do provide it there at the back table. We have some consent items. And then we have a public hearing. And then we have our reorganization. So if there's something that you would like to speak about, please come forward and say your name.
My name is Pat Holland, 101 Colony Drive. I'm the vice chair of the Senior Community Commission. So I just wanted to stop by tonight and tell you that we did select the older American of the Year Award. But I don't know if I'll tell you. Now, we met last Thursday.
Can you tell us the initials?
We met last Thursday. The commission met last Thursday. We had seven nominees, and they were all very good. We looked them over quite a bit, and we came up with Mr. Paul Hagan.
Oh, wow.
Wow, great.
Awesome.
Old American of the Year Award. We surprised him Monday. He teaches yoga classes.
Oh, fun.
So the commission showed up and interrupted his class in Malay and basket of Hawaiian fruit and took pictures and everything. So the reception's gonna be on May 10th. So you'll be getting invitations to that. Hopefully, you can make it, because it should be a pretty good crowd, especially with Paul being the honoree, so. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Hello, Rich Proctor, Library Board of Trustees. Have to excuse my froggy throat. The weather's getting to me a bit here. But I have the great pleasure to welcome you to a celebration. This is National Library Week. So we get to celebrate our wonderful Sierra Madre library. Just so happens, I'm reading a library book, which is called Palaces for the People. The subject of this book is that you can tell the civic health of a city by the commitment the city makes to two things, libraries and parks. And here's a, here's a, one paragraph from the book I wanted to share with you. This is Eric Kleinenberg, the man who wrote this book. He said, "Today, we have every reason to feel atomized and alienated, distrustful and afraid. But some places have the power to bring us together. And social bonding happens in thousands of libraries throughout the year. Our communities are full of children whose future will be formed in the places where they go to learn about themselves and the world they will inherit. They deserve palaces. Whether they get them is up to us." And I'm very happy to say we have a palace like that in Sierra Madre. And that palace is gonna be celebrating all this week for National Library Week. Saturday's gonna be the big day of celebration. There're gonna be three events there. And Christine Smart told me that we have our wonderful bookmark competition where children in the city create bookmarks and submit them. And this year, we got 300 submissions.
Wow.
And you're gonna be able to see the winners if you go to the library on Saturday. Also, on Saturday, there's gonna be a children's planting craft at 11:00 a.m. There's going to be a coffeehouse writers' group. You can meet writers who live in Sierra Madre discussing their work at 1:00 p.m. And the Nancy Edwards Dance Theater is gonna be there at 4:30. And there's also gonna be, tomorrow is gonna be a teen crafty book club, which you ought to go just 'cause it's a cool name. So, anyway, I wanna do a bit of bragging about the library. Christine also shared with me that she has a lot of stats about how our library matches up against libraries across the country. She said the average library gets 4.9 visits from each resident per year. Sierra Madre gets 7.7 visits. Now, why is that? Because when you walk into the Sierra Madre Public Library, you always get a smile. You always get a great selection of new books and movies and music CDs and newspapers. You always find new technology. They have virtual reality now. They have a 3D printer. They have a crycut craft machine. But most importantly, you always meet your friends and neighbors. People talk about there's red America, blue America, never the twain shall meet. A library is a purple place. And so this is the time of year when we celebrate that. Thank you.
And I did have the honor of selecting the mayor's choice bookmark. It was very difficult.
I bet.
It was really hard. I don't think we should be, have to do that, but we will. Thursday, I believe, we'll be presenting the winners.
Thursday, wonderful, okay. The thing about those bookmarks is great.
A five.
Is they radiate enthusiasm.
They're just gorgeous.
You look at those and you go, wow, you know, they're great. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Real quick, trustee Proctor, thank you, by the way, for your presentation. What time do events start on Saturday?
Okay, let's see. The Saturday events are, there's a children's planting craft, where the kid creates a pot and he gets a plant in. It's to take outside. That's at 11:00 a.m. Then there's a coffeehouse writers' group at 1:00 p.m. And finally, the Nancy Edwards Dance Theater is at 4:30 p.m. So a full day of fun at the library. Come early and stay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Do we have any other people who would like to come down and talk about items not on the agenda? I don't see anybody running down. Okay. I'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll go to our consent calendar.
We have three items on consent calendar, although one of them is very long. Item 1A, adoption of resolution 19-10 of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre approving certain demands. Consent item 1B, declaration of city-owned vehicles and equipment to be surplus. And item 1C, the first part is second reading of ordinance 1411 and ordinance of the City Council amending Title 17, Chapter 17.93. In parenthesis, standards and criteria for wireless communication facilities of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code to comply with federal requirements for small wireless facilities. The second part of 1C is consideration of Resolution 19-07, a resolution of the City Council establishing a fee for small wireless facility applications as contemplated by Sierra Madre Municipal Code, Chapter 17.93, dash, standards and criteria for wireless communications facilities. And that concludes the consent items.
Thank you. Is there a desire to pull any of these for discussion? Nope. Do you have any questions on any of these? You don't even have a question about the, Councilmember Capocha usually do.
No.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment if you would like to comment on items A, B, and C. All right, now, if anyone, I'll bring it back to council. Is there any discussion, or do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our one big agenda item tonight, and usually on a reorganization, we have a very light agenda, but we do have a public hearing tonight. And this is the call for review of a discretionary demolition permit to allow demolition in part or in whole of roof structure, exterior and interior walls and framing. And design review permit to allow construction of a 2,000, 2,080-square-foot addition onto the existing single-family residence to be aligned with the existing legally constructed side yard setback of the primary structure of the property located at 91 East Bonita Avenue. And I believe our director will be able to provide some information as to why this is in front of the city council tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. I'll go through the project at this point. As a reminder, this is a de novo hearing for the property located at 91 East Bonita Avenue. And as we queue up the PowerPoint, you have an opportunity to readjust your seats. So the city council will be considering a discretionary demolition permit and a design review permit for the property located at 91 East Bonita Avenue. The area in red indicates the location of the property, which is surrounded by single-family residential development. Majority of the homes in immediate proximity, with the exception of a couple of properties at the end of the cul-de-sac, are single-story. Photographs of the property. Image on the far left, top left, is the south elevation of the street-facing facade. The one adjacent to it on the north elevation is the rear of the property. Property is 27,000 square feet in size, so it's a fairly sizable parcel. And then we have views of both the east and west elevations indicating the side yard setbacks. So the applicant is requesting to renovate the existing one-story, 2,577-square-foot, single-story residence and attached 525-square-foot garage. And the applicant is requesting to construct a 2,082-square-foot addition and a detached 564-square-foot pool house. So the total square footage of both the garage, the pool house, as well as the primary structure totals 5,184 square feet. There's also another component. The applicant is wishing to align the existing primary structure side yard setbacks with the new addition. As part of the various discretionary action, the city council will be discussing a discretionary demolition permit that has to be approved as part of your overall resolution. Discretionary demolition permit is required because the property is over 75 years old. And the, an historic resource evaluation report was prepared for this site, and it determined that the property is not eligible for listing or designation as a local historic landmark. A design review permit is required for this project because the allowable gross floor area exceeds 3,500 square feet, which is one of the triggers that would require design review. A second element of this is, also requires a design review permit because the gross floor area of greater than 50 percent of the original structure is proposed to be aligned with the existing legally constructed side yard setback. This is overall project information. I won't go to all of the detail, but I'll highlight a couple of items. So it talks about lot size, lot coverage, building height, and setbacks, and parking requirements. The project is compliant, code compliant, with all of the various categories, with the exception of the cumulative side yard setback, which is highlighted, the existing and proposed in red on both these two columns. So existing conditions indicate that we have a 21-foot, 4-inch cumulative side yard setback, 12 feet, 1 inch on the east, 9 feet, 3 inches on the west. The code required for a sized property is 31 feet, 10 inches. And the code states that any given side can be a minimum of 10 feet. We also have an opportunity to look at the various site analysis. So the image on the far left is indication of the prevailing front yard setback. This property meets that requirement. The majority of the property, properties on the street, discounting the largest and the smallest, star setback at 50 feet. The chart on the right is actually showing the overall average of the measurement of the width of the property. At this case, it's 106 feet wide in terms of the average. Because of the lot is irregular, that is measured at 10-foot intervals. Another analysis that is also completed is the neighborhood analysis. And it basically is looking at the average and the mean of the average sizes of the homes on the property, within the noticed area that's highlighted in red. And these properties, the top one-third, this property, particular property, is larger than the top one-third by 231 square feet of the homes on, within that notification radius. As I mentioned, an historic resource evaluation was prepared for the project, which identify the project with colonial revival architectural style. The applicant wishes to maintain that existing character of the house as a one-story residence. And they will be replacing the front portico with round columns. They'll be widening the front entry door to include silights that would flank the entry door. The exterior walls are proposed to be reclad with coarse wood shingle siding. Windows are replaced with six-over-one windows within the existing openings. And the garage is being altered in terms of the roof line from a side gable to a front-facing gable with clear-story round window that faces the street. They're also requesting to install a new roof to be charcoal asphalt shingles. And also, a pool house of simple gable roof construction with shed roof on one side will also be part of the new construction for the overall proposed project. Both the landscape plan and arborist report were prepared for the project. The landscape plan is proposing to utilize drought-tolerant plants and will also comply with low-impact development and water efficiency landscape ordinance. The arborist report did identify one protected tree on the property, California Secamore, along the east property line. That arborist report identified specific preservation measures to protect the tree in place during the construction effort. And that would also require protective fencing around the drip line of the tree until construction has been completed. The arborist report also identified that the infiltration basin that is being proposed to capture rainwater on site should be at least 20 feet from the east property line. This is a tree protection plan, box A, located here, is the location of the Secamore tree. And that's showing the protective fencing around the drip line and also showing the path of travel during construction to protect, further protection of that tree. These are some quick images of both the site plan to the far left, the landscape plan in the center, and the LID plan to the right. The LID plan is indicating the infiltration basin in that location adjacent to the tree. These are the existing and proposed floor plans, basically showing the footprint, a proposed floor plan to the right. And this is a key of the renovation of the existing house and showing the additions. Starting at the very top of the image is, in blue, is the pool house. And then the purple indications are the proposed additions, including an infill adjacent to the garage. The garage is showing as existing. And then there is a small addition behind the garage at 71 square feet. This is the floor plan of the proposed pool house and the pool. The pool house is not a second dwelling unit. It's an accessory structure and does not have a kitchen. Proposed roof plan with a trellis structure located at the rear of the property and also along the pool house. The colored elevations, both the front or the south elevation on the top of the slide and the rear elevation below. Side elevations, east and west. The photo montage rendering. And the color and material board. So the city council will have to make specific findings that are included in full in your packet. These are the discretionary demolition permit findings. And basically, it's stating that the project has no local, state, or national historic significance, that the project will not unreasonably interfere with the use, possession, and enjoyment of surrounding or adjacent properties. The project is consistent with the objectives of residential low-density development of the general plan as well. The design review permit findings, there are a total of eight of them, and then subsections after finding number eight. But overall, the new addition will remain as a single-story building. The addition is to align with the existing structures, side yard setback, and which would comply with the code requirements subject to a design review permit approval. And the project, most of the project is gonna be located in the rear of the building in terms of the additions and will not be visible from public view, thereby reducing the overall massing and appearance from neighboring properties and therefore compatible with the existing neighborhood. The proposed single-story project also reflects the scale of the neighborhood, being that mostly the properties, with the exception of two on that street segment, are single-story buildings. The proposed project remains 18 and 18 feet in height, retaining the existing height of the building as a single-story building. And it also will continue to retain and contribute additional colonial revival-style architectural, displaying a coherent project-wide design. The proposed project also is seeking relief from development standards from the zoning code, which may allow the code, which may allow the alignment of the addition with the existing legally constructed side yard setback of the primary structure, again, subject to a design review permit. Finding eight and its subsections is required due to the project exceeding the size threshold of thirty-five hundred square feet, which triggers this particular finding of exceptional design. The, A, the proposed project is thoughtful in that it remains a one-story structure, and it's not, majority of the additions are not visible from public view. The protected tree, the existing California Secamore, is being retained in place and will be protected throughout the duration of construction. The project is also being, will preserve the existing front yard and side yard setbacks, and will preserve the views from neighboring properties. Again, the property, in terms of its architectural detail, is carried throughout all elevations of the building, and therefore is compatible to its colonial revival architectural aesthetic, and the project will comply with water-efficient landscape ordinance and low-impact development. So, the alternatives before the council this evening are to grant the appeal and approval of discretionary demolition permit and design review permit eighteen oh four pursuant to city council resolution nineteen dash zero eight. The council can also deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission or remand the matter back to the planning commission with direction. Staff is recommending that the city council approve discretionary demolition permit eighteen dash zero nine and design review permit dash eighteen dash zero four pursuant to city council resolution nineteen dash zero eight, subject to the findings and the staff report, as there is evidence to support the findings, to allow the demolition in part or in whole of the roof structure, exterior and interior walls and framing, and to allow the construction of a two-thousand-and-eighty square foot addition onto the existing single-family residence to be aligned with the existing legally constructed side yard setback of the primary structure. That concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, both myself and Claire Lynn are here to answer your questions. Also, the applicant also wishes to provide a presentation, if you so wish.
Thank you. So, I think the way I'd like to do this is first see if I have any questions from council to our director.
I may have a few after I hear from the applicant.
So, no other council has questions for the? So, before you begin, applicant, let's see if we need the presentation, and how long is this presentation?
I had the ten minutes. Vincent really covered the majority of the items that I'm going to cover, so I can kind of ad lib.
Yeah. Could you give us like a two-minute version of that?
Yes. I'll kind of just cut this thing down. So, my name is Bryson Reom. I'm here with my wife, Monica, and some local friends and neighbors from our street. We're obviously the owners of Ninety-One Bonita. We live here with our two children, Lane, six, who goes to St. Rita, Emerson, three, who goes to Sunnyside. I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to watch the videos and to walk the house, for having us at this meeting. We had planned to start these renovations in January this year, and have been renting a house and paying for a mortgage for the last four months due to some of the delays, and we're here asking for your help in finding a resolution and kind of ending our mental and financial strain. So, when we bought this house, it was advertised as-is and was slated to be torn down by a local developer to build kind of a true McMansion-style home. Having a background in historical renovations, I immediately saw the beauty of this home and knew that we could save it. So, we purchased the home, and we started down this path towards a kind of a thoughtful, beautiful design to breed life back into this seventy-five-year-old home. Now, it hasn't been designated historical, but it has been part of this community for over seventy-five years, and it's a house that a lot of locals do have a memory of. Key points to the project, again, Vincent did a fantastic job of kind of going through everything. I have a couple key slides I'll just run through to really simplify what he said. So, again, we're changing our four-bedroom, two-bath house into a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath house. We're keeping the home single-story, keeping it looking the same from the front, with the exception of the added window. Some amazing new landscape and some newer quality finishes, and repitching that front garage. We're building less than allowable square footage on the lot. This section here shows that we're removing a five-hundred-and-four-square-foot enclosed patio off the back of the house. Currently, this is a structure that's a tin structure, has no heating, air conditioning. We use this as our den, and we're taking that away and replacing that with a four-hundred-and-thirty square foot den off the kitchen. In the backyard, we are removing a five-hundred-and-forty square, forty-six square foot roofed area and adding a five-hundred-and-sixty-four square foot pool house. Currently, this existing structure is about two feet from the property line, and the new pool house makes the setbacks actually better in this area, better for us and our neighbor as well. The only real change, the big change to this house is on this side over here, the west side. And this is where we're putting the master bathroom and closet, and even here, we're still maintaining all of our original setbacks. There's a couple key components that we've done to kind of correct some previous flaws, and that's in one area where we're pushing the wall up so we don't have an out jog, and then in the area on the front where we're adding that window, when they added that garage at one point in time, they created this very strange jog in the front of the house, so we're just closing that up. So, we pick up some square footages in those areas as well. One key item I'd like to talk about is our floor area ratio, which is below average for the neighborhood. We're at sixteen percent. In our area, there's a high of twenty-six percent. So, people zero in a lot on square footage. I think the only logical way to look at it is when you're looking at lot size versus square footage for the street. Again, we're actually below average for our street for lot coverage and floor area ratio.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
I thought we said the floor area ratio was eighteen percent. Is it eighteen or sixteen, director?
Eighteen. Is it eighteen?
Thank you.
And there's a high of twenty-six on that street. Our neighbors are all in support of this renovation. Several of them are here tonight, and when I say neighbors, I mean all of our neighbors, every single owner on our street. Our neighbors have all visited the home, walked the site, seen the plans, and we have letters of approval from every single one of our neighbors. Most importantly, our two direct neighbors on either side of us have been heavily involved. They know what we're doing, and I'd like to thank all of them for being so supportive with what we're doing here tonight. The city staff, obviously, has spent an immense amount of time reviewing every detail of this project, and they approve of it. And I'd like to kind of reiterate that point, as I think it's a very, very important one. They're the most knowledgeable group involved in this project, the most knowledgeable in city codes and requirements, and I'd really like to thank Claire and Vincent for all the work that they've done on this and getting to this point and approving it as well. So, as Vincent mentioned, we're asking for two things. We're asking for the side yard setback relaxation, and that's clearly allowed in our code. It states, "Single-story additions onto existing primary structures which result in a gross floor area of greater than fifty percent of the original structure may be aligned with existing legally constructed side yard setback of the primary structure." So, that's kind of what we went with, and when we were designing it, we actually realized we hadn't caught that piece of code, and we were working off of a Pasadena code section that we had looked at, and that's how we ended up, they allow it, and we realized this was an actual condition we had to meet. So, we think that it works. We have a colonial revival home, and it's a key part of keeping that look and bringing it back to kind of its original glory. All the key points which Vincent went over, I think we hit all of them very clearly, so I don't think I need to go through all of those. Let me see here, that's the...
How many homes are on your street?
What is it?
How many homes?
Uh, that slide right there, I could probably count them. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I think there's twelve homes on our street.
And how many of the neighbors are here, if you could raise your hand?
Wow.
Thank you.
One of the big items that we ran into was the finding eight, and I'd like to just kind of key in on that for a second. I feel that we comply with all points under finding eight. We hired Betsy Cole, a local amazing architect. Rolling Greens Landscape is one of the most sought-after landscape designers in LA County. Robert Frank, a designer who has done and been invited back to the famous Pasadena showcase for the past ten years. They all specialize in traditional and historical homes. They're not in the business of designing unattractive homes or outdoor spaces, and they're experts in preservation. I only bring that up, it's not to impress anybody. It's this finding eight which you need to show that you're building something that is extraordinary and beautiful, and so I only bring that up to show that we are using the best of the best in terms of design to bring something beautiful to the neighborhood. And I've stated this a few times previously, but, you know, existing architecture dictates the design, simply meaning you can't force an idea of architecturally extraordinary onto an existing home with an existing look and feel. It's a very subjective line item, and one, in my professional opinion, that should really only be weighed in on by professionals in the field of architecture and design. When this question is opened up to individuals that don't have a background in architecture and design, it confuses a very clear issue. When you allow anyone to chime in with their idea of what is architecturally extraordinary, you're really left with only random opinions that in no way can be quantified or leveled. It's important to note that in our initial meeting, the planning commission has not once approved this finding for renovation for a home, not one, in three years. That's a pretty powerful statement, that they have not approved a single renovation of a home. What they have approved is numerous demolitions and numerous ground-up new builds. So, I think there's an issue here where it's a difficult piece of code for people to understand for a renovation, and I think the code is actually working against renovations in existing homes in our neighborhoods. But as a contractor with twenty years of experience in this industry, I know we hit all of these marks, as do my architect and designers, who all have backgrounds and reputations that support this. Lastly, I will like to say we are, we're actually supporters of this anti-mansionization act. And I only mention this as this word has been thrown around in reference to our home, and it does not apply. The actual definition of mansionization is as follows. "The act of demolishing smaller, older houses and neighborhoods and replacing them with newer, two-story ones that occupy the maximum amount of lot space available and are much larger in comparison to the surrounding dwellings, changing the overall character of the neighborhood." We are not demolishing our home. We are not building two stories. We are not maximizing our lot space. We're not changing the overall character of our neighborhood, and in fact, we're trying our very best to not do that. And to be clear, with that being said, we realize that we have a large home. We're not trying to skirt around the fact that this is a large home. But if you've visited our home, you know that the original core of this home, the two main areas and the two main rooms that you walk into, take up over a thousand square feet. And due to how this home was built in an elongated fashion, we've been tasked with designing around this core of this home to keep the original integrity of this home intact. Now, it's been a balancing act since day one, and it's, I can't tell you how much easier and more affordable it would be to tear the home down and build new, but it's important to point out that this is something that we did, we got into it, and we're very purposeful about taking this old home and renovating it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think that the easiest, most clear-cut...
Okay, wait, wait.
Yeah.
You said "lastly."
Lastly.
Three paragraphs ago. So, one more sentence.
One more sentence. I think there's one slide here that I think is very important. The green line is the existing home's footprint. The red line is the new home's footprint. This is a single-story home. The net change to the footprint of this house is basically zero. So, that's the most cut-and-dried way I can overlay this home to show, you can talk about it a million different ways, you can walk it, but when we talk about this home, green is new, and the red is old, and it's very clear that there's not a big change here to the lot, to the neighborhood, to anything. So, I think that's kind of the easiest way to show what we're doing. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sorry to rush you, but we do have some...
No, no, no.
We do have some special guests here tonight, so we want to make sure that we allot the time. So, before we go back to council, I can open this up for public comment. Here's the thing. How many of you from the neighborhood want to speak? Just one, two? So, I would say, from the neighborhood, if you have one person who just can come down and tell us why you think the house should be allowed. Who's the most... Apparently, this man in the plaid shirt has been elected from the neighborhood. And then, do we have anybody in the audience who is opposed to this design from the neighborhood? From the neighborhood? Okay. And your name, sir?
My name's John O'Brien. I live at Seventy East Bonita, directly across, well, kind of catty corner across the street from the cul-de-sac. When we moved into, well, lifelong resident of Sierra Madre, attended St. Rita's school, played Little League, went to St. Francis, bought our first home on Sierra Madre Boulevard, moved to our home on Bonita approximately ten years ago, and have done slight remodels throughout the year just to bring our place up to where it is today. And certainly, when you look around, that's always been the charm of Sierra Madre, is, for the most part, no two structures are alike. And to ask what they're asking to do keeps the character of that home. It's a very unique characteristic within the city that you don't see that often. And if they're able to afford and keep that, I think all the neighbors in the, on Bonita are supportive of that, and we'd certainly appreciate you allowing them to move forward. I've been over there. Until tonight, all I was looking at is square foot change, but seeing the photos that came up there, it truly is a beautiful home that will be going into that lot, and I think something that the former resident who passed away in the home would be proud of. I know, as it was mentioned, it was sold to a local developer. They were planning on mowing it down. That did not happen. Bryce came in, purchased it, now his lovely family lives there. Our boys are out playing on the cul-de-sac nightly, so certainly appreciate your considerations so we can revitalize that into the street and start bringing folks back in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down in support of your neighbor. So, I saw one hand from somebody who's opposed to it. Did you want to come down? No? Did you have anything else to say besides what he said? What we don't want is to have five or six different people say the same thing.
I just like to say...
But you need to come to the podium if you're going to talk.
My name is Nancy Pearson. I live right next door on the east side of the family whose beautiful home we're talking about, and they have been wonderful and kept all of us abreast of the plans that they're making from the beginning, and very thoughtful, and just, we feel like they've been open and supportive of us, and very, very considerate of our neighborhood and all of the neighbors. So, that's really all I want to say.
They're not having any big, large nightly parties or anything?
No.
So, they're going to be good neighbors?
Tiny children. Tiny children. We have an adult autistic son who lives with us, and they're just great. They're so considerate about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to open this up for other people in the audience who would like to comment on this. Anybody else like to come down?
Okay. Honorable mayor, members of council and city staff, my name is Bob Spears, and I live at Eighty West Grandview. As a senior member of the Sierra Madre Planning Commission, I would like to provide a little background as to why this case is before you tonight and to offer a possible solution. As a longtime member of the planning commission, I can tell you that the commission takes great care and pride in upholding the city's general plan, the zoning codes, as well as design development standards. We work at protecting the city from development that is not condoned by our community standards. I believe that this case is before you tonight for two reasons. One, there's a problem with the process, and two, there's a problem with the applicant. Since I've been a member of the planning commission in 2005, the process has been highly predictable. After meeting with city staff, an applicant requests some measure of forgiveness from the planning commission. The commission reviews the application and proffers possible solutions that may meet both the needs of the applicant and the concerns of the city and its citizens. The process may not be, may take more than one meeting, but common ground is eventually reached, and in some cases, commission members even supply technical assistance to expedite the process. In all cases, the commission provides honest and clear feedback to the applicant with the expectation that the applicant can build on this information and provide the process, provide the process for the design, and proceed with the design. This is not the process that was followed by this application. After difficult meetings with the city staff, the applicant brought the proposed project to the commission. The scale of the project requires that the planning commission agrees with the project that complies with design review findings. The application did not show evidence of meeting the findings, and the applicant, in his presentation, offered no evidence or information to support the findings. What the commission did here was this. One, the applicant has a contract with a company that restores buildings in Los Angeles and has, quote, "great experience in the field." Two, the shingle-clad design of this building was presented to the planning commission was not the work of an architect, but rather a designer. Three, on page four, the applicant's own historical evaluation... Three, on page four of the applicant's own historical evaluation report, it stated, quote, "Additionally, the shingles will essentially be a veneer and can be removed at a future date," unquote. On page 10 of the applicant's historical evaluation, it says, quote, "This building is a low-style example of this architectural style," unquote. The applicant was not going to entertain any compromise on complying with a sideyard step-back, and on this point, the applicant was quite dismissive. The Planning Commission provided the applicant with some feedback and even ways to meet the design review findings. Unfortunately, the process ended there, and rather than even attempting to modify the project application, the applicant merely resubmitted the same incomplete application and again refused to explain to the commission how covering a, quote, "low-style example of this architectural style," unquote, in shingles made it a, quote, "superior project" that would enhance its neighborhood and exhibit exceptional design. It is my personal belief that if the applicant had been much better served by engaging in dialogue with the Planning Commission about how this project meets the design review standards and working with the commission to reach common ground. The second reason this application is before you tonight lies with the applicant. It is my personal impression that the applicant felt, based on his experience, that he has superior command of local development standards. Since this company has experience in the city of Los Angeles, how hard could it be that Little Sierra Madre, how hard could it be to succeed in Little Sierra Madre? The applicant was so sure of his position that he rented the home across the street for his family in expectation that this project would be quickly approved. The applicant was so sure of his position that he used the designer rather than an architect to create the project. The applicant was so sure of his position that he consulted an excellent local architect only after his application was not approved. The applicant was so sure of his position that he did not defend how his design met city expectations. While I understand that the applicant is under financial pressure of two residences and frustrated by his lack of progress in an area that he feels that he has command of, I believe that these points of frustration are self-imposed. Because of the applicant's decision, the city council now finds itself in the same position that the Planning Commission did two months ago. The original application remains unchanged. At this point, I want to remind the council members that there are a lot of vacant lots at the top of Baldwin that will need to go through a similar process. Your decision tonight will be watched by other developers who may want to adopt this applicant's take-it-or-leave-it attitude. Your decision will be seen as a roadmap by others on how to avoid the basic standards for development in Sierra Madre. So let me offer you a possible solution to this dilemma. Give the applicant another opportunity to meet the city's basic standards. Give the applicant the time needed to meet with a qualified architect and then ask him to return to the Planning Commission with a design that he can defend. Ask the applicant to invest the time and energy needed to produce a quality application and then bring it back to the Planning Commission. Please let the Planning Commission do its job. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Public comment? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Before we go to the rest of the council, if I can just ask a couple of questions of the director. One was mentioned that there wasn't a qualified architect. Is that true or not true?
The project was designed by, the initial design was designed by a designer.
A designer. And hasn't an architect been involved?
I believe he had consulted with an architect, but we did not see him at the last meeting.
There was talk of shingles. Can you explain that to the public? What the issue was there?
The proposed building is clad both with stucco and the front facade has some painted brick. The proposal is to clad the entire perimeter of the building or the entire facade of the building with shingles.
Okay. Thank you. Bringing it back to council, do we have any questions either for the applicant, for the director, for the city manager, for our attorney?
Questions?
Okay.
Yes, I have a question for the applicant. I've watched, I was at the first meeting, and I've watched both Planning Commission meetings twice, so I'm familiar with what was discussed. But what I remember from the first meeting is, I do agree that you were not given any specific direction. I don't recall that there was even mention of the shingles at the first meeting. But I do recall that you were, you were told by the Planning Commission to work with city staff to get an idea of what exceptional design would look like. So I want to hear from you what you did and also what your intent was hiring the architect. Why did you hire an architect if there was no change made?
Yeah, so first and foremost, the project was designed by an architect, Betsy Cole, who's a licensed architect, so I'm not sure whether the confusion is there. We hired both, Betsy Cole, who's a licensed architect, along with Robert Frank, who is a designer, to work together to design the project. The amount of items that Bob went over that are incorrect can clearly be seen on the video. I'm so glad that we do videotape these because, first and foremost, I came to the first-
Okay.
... Planning Commission. This is to his, yeah, to his point.
Going to answer his question? Okay, thank you.
I asked numerous times on the architecturally extraordinary side, how do I meet this finding? Can't tell you. I said, and I quote, and you can check the video, "Who decides what is architecturally extraordinary?" They very quickly said, "We do." Okay, so, and I said, "I'm here. I've got the best design team in town. I'm a contractor. Let's do this. Let's make this architecturally extraordinary. Give me some feedback." Crickets. You can watch the video and you can see that. Their response to me was, "When we see it, we know it."
So my question to you, though, is you were told to go back to staff and work with staff. So what did you do after?
When I went back and met with staff, because we got no recommendations on what we could do, we didn't know what to do. We had no direction. So honestly, we were like, "We don't know what to do here." We got zero direction from-
And staff was not able to provide you with that information?
No.
Can I just ask another question about-
Yes, you may.
The shingles.
Mm-hmm.
I do recall, and Mr. Spears had commented on the shingles at the second meeting, and I think you, Mr. Spears, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you wanted the applicant to explain how shingles were extraordinary design. But what other options could have been considered extraordinary? I never did get that out of the meeting after watching it. And by the way, this is the second meeting, not the first meeting. So the other suggestion I recall hearing, Mr. Spears, the one that you made, was to possibly break up the front of the house because filling in that infill space made this long thing between the garage and, say, the front overhang. But, but again, what I didn't hear was a specific suggestion to do that, but did you take those into consideration before you came to us to?
Absolutely. When we did this design, we spent over a year and a half going through multiple different iterations of shingles, siding, stone, shingles, the whole breakdown. So my issue was, I have a highly reputable design team behind this, and somebody says, "What about shingles?" At a meeting where they've looked at the project for five minutes, when I have been living this project for a year and a half with one of the best design teams around, I said, "We've been through this. We have the design team. We've gone through it with Sappho's Environmental. We understand the colonial revival look that we're going for. This is, what we're providing here is a top-tier project that has been well thought through." We got zero feedback on how to change that. And where I would question this architecturally extraordinary idea is taking direction from somebody that's looked at my project for an hour and a half versus a professional design team that has spent a year and a half, it doesn't make any logical sense. So that's where we were confused even further of, how are you giving me direction on this when I have a team of people that this is what they do for a living? And they don't even have experience in architecture and design in the real world. So to me, it doesn't make any sense. I'm just confused.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Yeah.
Because we don't want, we're not going to, you know, say anything about the Planning Commission. Your project is up here. I will tell you, they look at the projects for more than five minutes and more than an hour and a half, and we do have architects and attorneys and people on the Planning Commission that do know what they're talking about. So I think the question was about the shingles and what the final decision was why you decided to go with what you did.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I, yeah, I'm, yeah, that's fine. I do have a question for staff, though, is how many renovations have been submitted that fell under these, this finding number eight, that were over 3,500 square feet? Because you had mentioned that none have been approved, and I recall the Planning Commission talking about one on Oak Meadow. But were there a spade of these or?
We have a few of them. One of them also, and most recently, was 535 North Hermosa Avenue. That was an addition there. And we've applied it to, I believe, the Oak Meadow project certainly as another recent project.
Are these remodels in a sense like this one where the applicant is trying to keep a reasonable simile of the facade of the house?
The Oak Meadow project was actually a full demolition, a complete demolition. The Hermosa project was a remodel.
So those are the only two, then? Well, the demolition doesn't count. I mean, that's different.
Right.
That's a brand-new home, you know? Okay.
Any other questions from our council members? Mayor Parton?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll bring it back for discussion. Are you all going to be shy?
No.
No, yeah, no. I mean, I can jump in. I mean, on the-
You're the one to jump in.
Yeah, exactly. I'll go quickly here. I mean, I like this project and I'm going to vote for its approval. I can make all the findings in both of the permits. In the design review, in terms of exceptional design, I mean, you should come look and see where I live. This is pretty exceptional for the average person. And I'll leave it at that. I mean, we can discuss it more, but I really like this project.
I'm concerned that we, you know, this is the law of unintended consequences, that, you know, we here, the council, have approved in ordinance that basically is boxing our Planning Commission in to make that finding when it doesn't, to me, it doesn't necessarily apply to, or to a degree, to a remodel like this. I mean, here's a fellow that's trying to preserve, and his neighbor made a very pertinent comment about, you know, everything being in Sierra Madre a little bit different. You know, if we demolished and built Mersal houses, we'd look like Arcadia. And so I think it's important that we have some flexibility for a family that's trying to preserve a house because I don't know this for a fact, but you made a comment, Mr. Romy, Remy, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing it right, but it would have been a lot cheaper and easier for you to demolish that house and build something that meets the floor-area ratio that could easily meet the extraordinary design because you're starting with a blank slate. But I appreciate people that are trying to preserve houses that are not necessarily historical. I mean, look at the house I live in, built in 1912. If I wanted to demolish that and build another one, I could because you're not going to find that it's historical, but it's certainly to me-
Yes, because you lived there.
Well, yeah. There's a, well, we've probably had about 120 former council members that have owned houses in Sierra Madre, but, you know, but I mean, the point I'm trying to make is, is I appreciate the house that I live in very much and have tried to preserve its style, but I could easily tear that down and demolish it and build something that, a one-story house that would never even go to the Planning Commission, that would not be extraordinary. And I've seen many non-extrordinary houses built in Sierra Madre because they could. But here's a person that wants to live in this house, and he's designing some, I don't think he's designing something that he doesn't like. He's certainly spending a lot of money on this house, and I can't see how, from what I see in the package, that you're skimping on materials. So I'm not really sure how, how one could give him direction on how to make this extraordinary. And he's doing the right things by hiring top-notch people, and he certainly sounds qualified to me from his experience as a renovation contractor. So with all that, I mean, when I weigh that, it's, I just, I just put myself in his position, and I'd have a tough time trying to figure out how to meet this standard that we have set via our municipal code, so.
Go ahead.
First, I agree with Councilmember Harabedian. I can make all the findings, as he said he could. Walked the property the other day and spent some substantial time looking up close, talked to some neighbors. So I've got a little bit deeper assessment from neighbors than I heard tonight. And I think you're right, too, Councilmember Capocchio. I think we ought to learn from this, we ought to go back and revisit that ordinance. I think we ought to take another look at it and see if there's some way we can revise it and make it work better. Because my personal view of this is that we ought to be, we ought to have government policies that encourage people to do the very thing that the applicant is doing. And I think that if we make things too onerous, then we're going to get more of the tear downs and we're going to get more of the cookie-cutter houses, which is exactly the opposite of what we set out to do here with our general plan and a number of ordinances we've passed over the years since this council's been together. So I do support the applicant here. I want to say also that I have nothing but respect for Commissioner Spears, Hutt, all the rest of them. I think I voted for all of them at one time or another when their candidacies came to this council. I have nothing but respect for them. They're fine people, so I'm not really of the mind that this is any, my vote on this is any, should have no, no one should be reading anything into that. I think they're doing a fine job, and I think on this one, maybe we have an ordinance that maybe, as my colleague here said, maybe put them in a box that they had to follow. Nevertheless, I support the applicant, and I think this is a good project.
I don't know if I'll be adding anything new to the conversation. I do want to recognize the Planning Commission. You know, you're doing what you need to do, and you're following what the intent is of general plan and zoning and the ordinances and ordinances that we have passed here as a city council. Given that this is considered as a new hearing, you know, I would look at this plan and say, "Yeah, I think it meets all of the findings." You know, this exceptional design and how we phrased it, I even questioned, when did this, when did we pass this? And it actually was with this council in 2017 that we did. And the intent of it really was about, at least from what I remember, is new homes and newly-designed homes and not really renovations. So it's helpful to hear that we really haven't applied it to pass renovation, renovation projects. But again, it was the intent that we are not going to do the McMansions. You know, I think a lot of this can be about what your preference is, you know? Do you like the shingles? I may not like the shingles. I may like the brick. But that might be more of a preference versus what we're looking at in item number eight. So I can understand how, I think it does meet all of the areas and all of the items, but it's, I think, a lesson to us and really what the intent of the policy is in the ordinance and needing to revisit that. Visually, I think it looks great. You can walk through the neighborhood and say, "Yeah, I think it fits in." Would they be all my choices? Maybe not. But I think I can respect the owners of the property and also those that designed and those that worked on the project, so I'd be in support of approving this.
And I don't have very much more to add, except I have the utmost respect for our Planning Commission and what they do, and they do have a tremendous amount of experience. They have been looking at plans forever. They understand our general plan. They understand our codes. But I go back to one thing, and that was I spent three years of my life putting together the general plan with the help of committee members, talking to almost every person, I think, in the city. And the one thing that always came through was, we want to be able to preserve Sierra Madre. And even though we can't take a snapshot and make everything remain the same, we wanted to be able to preserve the character and preserve what Sierra Madre is. And we can never articulate it. There's not one word that describes it. But there is one thing that we all agreed on, is you can tell when it doesn't fit. And when I looked at this design, and not having the experience of the Planning Commission, but noting that we met all the findings, I don't see why we wouldn't want to move forward with a project that preserves part of our Sierra Madre, that fits into the neighborhood. We have our neighbors who are all in agreement that they like the project, which is another part of the general plan, was we wanted to be able to communicate with our neighbors and everybody have that feel. And so I am in favor of moving this forward as well, so. With that, if we could have a motion?
Yes, so I'll make the formal-
Yes. So I'll make the formal motion to grant the appeal, grant the demolition permit, and grant the design review permit as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to begin, and I'm sure that all of you want to stay for this, but I'm going to give you a heads up. We're going to start our presentation, working in our reorganization. So if you want to take a quick little two-minute break and exit quietly, you can. I really thought I got them with the presentation, but they're all leaving. We do have cake, I think, if you stay. Am I doing what? Yeah. It's going to be very brief. So next on our agenda is State of the City. Every year, tradition here in Sierra Madre is that the mayor holds a State of the City. And my gift to the staff this year was we weren't going to do it. So we didn't have, they didn't have to put the work into it and spend the night. But I do want to acknowledge all the work that the city council has done in the last year. We come to these meetings, you know, twice a month, then we go through our agendas. And I think it's good for us to reflect and see how awesome we really are. So I will be very brief with this. During the April 28th through April 29th, our city council, most notably, adopted the CalPERS Pension Stabilization Plan. At the time of the adoption, the city's pension plan was funded at least at less than 70% with costs increasing at the staggering pace. In the 2019-2020 budget year, unfunded pension costs were anticipated to exceed $1.1 million. And we were equal and were equal to nearly 10% of the city general fund expenditures. With the adoption of the Pension Stabilization Plan, the city's pension liability was reduced by 46%. And the overall pension program is new, is now funded at approximately 80%. Good job to us. In 2017, the city lost 29% of all water produced through failed water main leaks. Does anybody remember that in 2017? The city began to address this plan in 2018 with the adoption of Water Main Replacement Program. This, during the, the last year, the city implemented the AMI Smart Meter Installation Program. This will install an automatic, automated meter in every residence and business in Sierra Madre. This program will reduce water use, increase conservation while empowering residents to manage their water consumption responsibility. We also, as a council, worked on the downtown district, business districts, pays, the pays for lighting, landscape maintenance, parking, and other items, which benefit the businesses of the downtown district. Over time, two of the four districts required subsidy from the general fund, while the remaining two collected fees far in excess of expenditures necessary. The city put forward a plan to reduce the overall collection of fees from businesses by approximately 15%. So this is the really good news, while also reducing the general fund subsidy by nearly $40,000. This plan lowers taxes while also reducing expenditures. And I think most importantly, the 2017-28 budget was balanced with an overall surplus of $1.3 million, and the 2018-29 budget was adopted as balanced with a small surplus. The city council has continued to provide high-quality services to Sierra Madre residents without increasing expenditures. This is in a stark contrast to neighboring cities in San Gabriel Valley, who are declaring financial emergencies, raising taxes to fund budget deficits or both. I would like to say that the city council does not do that all on its own. It's to the staff and our general manager, our city manager, who make all of this happen. They take our vision and make it come to life. And it is the collaborative work that we do up here on the city council that has allowed us to do so many of these wonderful things and that we are in a place that most of our cities aren't, and that is that we're financially stable. So I thank you all for that. And that concludes my State of the City. So next, we have a presentation of recognition about going Mayor Delmar. I don't know what that is.
Looking for...
Somebody needs to...
Oh, there she is.
I already have my gavel, don't I?
Do you just introduce?
I have my half gavel.
So I think, yeah, and I'll just, you know, the, there's numerous guests here from the different legislative offices. So if each of you want to just come down individually and, and present the mayor, that'd be great. And we have some from, is, is there an Assembly Representative from Assemblyman Holden's office? Okay, great. And I think so we're covered.
Do you want me down there too?
Yeah, you, you should be there.
Okay. And as mayor, can I request no pictures?
No, you can't.
You're going to have to do pictures.
My last thing is, may I?
Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Hi. So my name is Miley Plan with Congresswoman Judy Chute's office. I wanted to come here today to thank you, mayor, for your dedication and devotion to the city of Sierra Madre and your hard work over this past year as mayor to make the city even better than before. So on behalf of the congresswomen, I wanted to present a certificate of congressional recognition and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to jam?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's usually just, maybe we could just have a... I'm sorry. It's been a long wait.
Thank you. Thank you again. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor. I'm Vickery Murphy with Senator Portantino's office. And I don't know whether to say congratulations for getting to have slightly less on your plate, but...
Congratulations would be a problem.
But thank you on behalf of the whole city and on behalf of the senator. And I have a certificate of recognition for you, and it, it thanks you for your exceptional dedication and contributions to the city. And let's see, your exceptional dedication in the many leadership roles you have undertaken is a continual inspiration to those who have worked alongside you and I'm sure to the city as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I know there are other people, so...
Yes, I know they want to take pictures.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Council. My name is Hector Rodriguez. I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Chris Holden. And I'm here in recognition of your steadfast commitment to the city of Sierra Madre and ensuring that the council, the city government, and all the residents are in the best possible position to improve the quality of life of all the residents of Sierra Madre. So I want to congratulate you and thank you for, for your work.
Thank you. Thank you. There's my friend.
Everybody's friend in Sierra Madre.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and to the, the city council of the wonderful city of Sierra Madre, to the city attorney, the city manager, and the clerk, and all those that are present. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of LA County Supervisor Catherine Barker. I remember I, I got the email and I made a little note on my calendar, and I don't know if you remember, but you asked for something specific.
I did. I'm glad you remembered. Thank you.
Yes, you did. So I thought, as I was sitting in my seat, the first time we met is I had the honor to sit with you and Councilmember Capocha at, on the panel at Alverno. As far as talking about leadership and sharing that and our ideals to those young ladies as they went forward in their government week. So here we go. Mayor Delmar. It's always a pleasure to come to Sierra Madre because of the warm welcome that you get. You see that the city is set up against the, the mountains and just welcomes you on in as far as your beautiful road down Sierra Madre Boulevard. But I say all this to say thank you for your service to this community and also to your region. Many of us have the desire to serve, but we don't have the courage to act. And that's what you've done, sacrificing many hours, I assume, but nevertheless doing so with pride in your community. So on behalf of Supervisor Barker, I'd like to make this presentation to you and say thank you for a job well done in your mayorship.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Yeah. So, and then last but not least, but from the city, we're going to present the mayor with a few things. But, you know, I think, and each of the council members can speak to this because each of us has served as mayor at this point, but it's hard to be mayor. And it's a lot harder to be mayor than to be a regular city council member, and you did such a great job. I think Denise just did a phenomenal job this year, leading us as a council and leading the community. And it's not easy to do when you have a family, when you have a job, when you have new grandkids. So I think we, we owe you a big round of applause. So... So, and here's the city of Sierra Madre's certificate of recognition for Denise Delmar, Sierra Madre Mayor, 2018, 2019, whereas Denise Delmar was elected to serve on the city council in 2014, serving as Mayor Pro Tem from 2017 to 2018, and appointed to serve as mayor from 2018 to 2019. Whereas Mayor Denise Delmar faithfully and skillfully represented Sierra Madre and its citizens at meetings with public agencies, at public events, and at various, various ceremonies, Mayor Delmar presided over 23 regular and special city council meetings, encouraging and facilitating an orderly, civil, congenial, and highly productive council. And whereas Mayor Delmar led the city through a fiscally balanced budget, through responsible and prudent management, and maintained Sierra Madre as a full-service community. And whereas Mayor Delmar, leadership over the city of Sierra Madre, adopted the CalPERS Pension Stabilization Plan and along with the city council, implemented the AMI Smart Meter Installation Program to reduce water use and increase water conservation. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Sierra Madre does hereby commend with great appreciation Mayor Denise Delmar for her dedication and service to the community of Sierra Madre, presented this ninth day of April 2019, Sierra Madre City Council, yourself, Mayor Pro Tem John Harabedian, Councilmembers Rochelle Arizmendi, John Capocha, and Jean Goss.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I wanted one of these.
And then...
The working set.
And then the tile. So as mayor, you get a official city of Sierra Madre tile, which says your name, mayor, the term that you served, and it's presented to you by the city council in recognition of your dedicated service to the city.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And then we'll all take a picture. Yeah.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Natalia.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, thank you. I was realizing today that we've all served five years together. I went on our staffs.
It's amazing. And Councilmember Arizmendi asked a good question. The gavel, does she still, she'll get the official mayoral gavel, right? Okay, good. So we'll have to...
Oh, so I take, do I take this one?
No, it's much nicer.
All right. So now we're at the last agenda item today, which is our city council reorganization, mayor and mayor pro tem terms. So at this point, we are going to appoint a new mayor and a new mayor pro tem. I want to remind the audience that we did, I don't know if you all got your little card in the mail, but we all made, actually while we were all on council, we had to consolidate with the Los Angeles County elections, which are held in November. And in our intimate wisdom, we said, oh, we'll do that in 2022 because it's not going to affect anybody here. And obviously, your council's not too bright because there's three of us that it does affect. So there will be an extension of, of our terms, both Councilmember Capocha and Mayor Pro Tem Harabedian, as the three of us do. So right now, do I have any nominations for our mayor?
May I have the pleasure of making a nomination?
Yes, you may.
With great pleasure, I would like to nominate John Harabedian for our next mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I will do the, we also need a nomination for our mayor pro tem.
And so we were going to talk about terms at some point. And so I don't know if we want to talk about terms before, but my nom...
No, let's not talk about terms.
Okay. Well, my nomination would be for John Capocha to be mayor pro tem. And I would love for John to be serving in that extended period.
Until November?
I would love for John and I to be splitting the mayorship during that period of time, which we can decide at some point. But I think John...
So I need specifics?
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to discuss this potentially.
Because remember, I'm an HR person. We do job descriptions and so...
I move that we don't discuss it and we just make a nomination for mayor pro tem and let's decide later what happens.
That's my nomination.
Thank you.
I'll need a second for that nomination.
I just want to get clarification. So we're not talking about dividing up the term now?
That's my motion, is to not talk about that right now.
I'm going to listen, I'm going to hear what Councilmember Arizmendi has to say, and then I will add my two cents in.
No, I'm, I'm fine with either or. I mean, at some point, we have to discuss what the terms will look like, given that the change of what our terms are in total. As of now, I'm fine with the nomination of Mayor Pro Tem as Mayor Pro Tem with Councilmember Capocha. So whether it's tonight we discuss it and/or if we have to agendize it, I think we are within the scope of the discussion tonight. But I can definitely postpone it for the second or for the next meeting. I'm fine with that also. There's a reason that Councilmember New Mayor Pro Tem is eyeballing. So I'm open to discussing it the next meeting.
So we have a motion for Councilmember Capocha to be the new mayor pro tem to, and we have two new positions that may or may not go to November.
Correct.
Correct.
My intention would not be that I serve until November 2020 as mayor.
So I would like someone to put a caveat on this motion that the terms are decided at the first meeting in May, because you're not going to be here in April, right?
Oh, correct.
So the first meeting in May.
I'll make the change or friendly amendment to that motion.
Accepting.
And, and just a point of clarification. So we're also, we'll also be discussing at that meeting what the term is for the mayor and the mayor...
And the mayor pro tem.
That's right.
And then the following terms for the next mayor and mayor pro tem.
Correct.
If I can comment, I think to make it simple, alls we are doing is setting a date for reorganization. That is sufficient.
No, not really. But we'll talk about it in May.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so my motion was on for Capocha for mayor pro tem. Did you second with that?
I'm seconding it with a friendly amendment that we would discuss this in terms of terms.
We will discuss terms for all of us in May. I'm still hoping that my term ends in April 2022. See if we can get that out. Okay? So the motion is that we have our honorable Mayor Pro Tem, John Capocha, to serve as the mayor pro tem. We don't know how long. Okay.
Do you need, so you have a second?
All those, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. We have a, we can now adjourn. Chairs and you can adjourn us.
Well, thank you, thank you. I'm not even going to sit down so that we can go eat cake, but can I have a motion to adjourn?